Okay, it's 6:30 and we're going to get started. I need to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded and staying and participating gives your consent to being taped. Everyone rise please for the pledge. If everyone could please remain standing for just a minute. We have an SRPD police officer, Dan Teague, who's going through some major health issues. And I would like us to take a moment of silence to send him our best, please. Okay, Mr. Walters is here from the emergency management system and he's going to present to us a little bit of information that we need to know for our emergency management team.
Thank you, Council President, members of council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Stanton Walters, S.T.A.N.T.O.N. Walters, W.A.L.T.E.R.S. I reside at 26 Essex Circle Drive in Shrewsbury Borough. And I am the Emergency Management Coordinator for the Southern York County Emergency Management Agency, which we abbreviate to SCEMA and say SKEMA for short, so that we can get it out over the radio. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about emergency management here in the state of Pennsylvania as it pertains to York Borough. A number of years ago, four or five now, I was serving as the Emergency Management Coordinator for the Borough of Shrewsbury. At that time, I was asked by the Township of Shrewsbury if I would also serve as their coordinator. I agreed to do that if they would consider regionalizing or combining into a single entity. And that venture was pursued and ultimately, the South Central York County Emergency Management Agency was created, which now serves the municipalities of Shrewsbury Township and the boroughs of Glen Rock Railroad and Shrewsbury. Emergency management supports your first responders, your police, fire, and EMS, but we particularly engage in prevention, preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation to disasters. And we refer to those items as the wheel, the response, the disaster wheel. I know it doesn't show up perfectly well, but many times, these different phases of disaster will blend into one another. For example, response doesn't end abruptly and recovery start, but recovery may begin while response is still ongoing. Disasters take a lot of different shapes and sizes, anything from a car accident, which we may not think of it as a disaster unless you're the one who's in it, and that's a disaster for you, to a fire, to flooding, or to large-scale wind damage. So, under Pennsylvania Title 35, which is the law on the books, you as municipal elected officials are responsible for the health and welfare of your citizens and any environmental issues that come up in the municipality. Each municipality is supposed to have, under that title, an Emergency Management Coordinator or EMC, an Emergency Operations Plan or EOP, and an Emergency Operations Center or EOC. And you're supposed to formally adopt NIMS, the National Incident Management System, by resolution within your municipality. So, these are requirements of Title 35. An appointed Emergency Management Coordinator, then you delegate to that person the responsibilities of maintaining your plan and what we call the NARM, or Notification and Resource Manual. EMC also keeps current with training and doing various types of drills under the auspices of York County Emergency Management. EMC also maintains the EOC itself, which can be something as small as a closet or could be an entire room, as well as a staff. And the EMC works directly with you as elected officials during a disaster and also supporting response agencies. So, in your particular situation, the question is why, why regionalize? Well, York County Office of Emergency Management is in favor of regionalization, and these are some of the reasons. Volunteers are hard to find. And it is a commitment of time for the volunteers who undertake to be your EMA staff. By regionalizing, the covered, the member municipalities can have one plan instead of each municipality having to maintain an individual plan. Resources can be better utilized and there is a financial savings that can be realized by collectively sharing the cost of running the organization. I know this one's a little bit small, the typing here, but if you as council members receive the PA Borough News, the magazine for borough councils, they occasionally have articles in regard to EMA, and a couple of them from past issues of the June of 2016, which discussed NIMS compliance for local governments. So, if you looked at that article up, you could read about NIMS compliance. And in September of that year, it was actually addressed to emergency coordinators, but if you would read the article, your role as an emergency coordinator, it would enlighten you a lot about what your emergency coordinator does for your municipality. In addition to that, annually, the York County Office of Emergency Management conducts a seminar for elected officials, and in the current circumstances, that date is yet to be determined. But if you go to the York County webpage and look up the Municipal Emergency Management Coordinator section under Emergency Response, there are links there to a manual, a training manual for elected officials, as well as some other material for you to consider. And you can do that anytime. You can go look at that right now. So, South Central York County EMA is operational and is governed by an intergovernmental agreement that those four municipalities entered into. They do have a set of bylaws, and I'm accountable to that committee, which meets on a quarterly basis. As I said earlier, York County Office of Emergency Management encourages regionalization. There's obviously a lot more detail behind these talking points that are too lengthy to get into in the meeting, but this is just to give you a taste or flavor of what EMA is about and how SKEMA might be able to help your borough. So, do you have any questions for me?
Stan, we've recently been given the EOP of those fire company. Now, what is your plan or how does your plan look in comparison with that?
So, I'm not sure what kind of an EOP a fire company is required to have. I don't really know what that looks like, but PMA, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, put together a template, or what's called a basic plan, that municipalities can use as the starting point for their EOP. But things that you want to have in there are, for example, a reference to the York County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which you might be familiar with. We're very fortunate, we don't have to do our own mitigation plan. The York County Planning Commission does one for everybody, and you just have to adopt it by resolution. But in addition, the EOP describes how EMA is going to respond to different scenarios. So, with weather-related heat, what are we going to do on days when temperatures and heat indices exceed a certain amount, people who are vulnerable? What I've generally found is that people pretty much want to hunker down and stay in their own homes where they can get air conditioning or run fans. And it takes a second something else to happen to trigger them to need to leave home, for example, if the power were then to fail. And so, our plan in that case is to open up what's called a heating or cooling station in the summer, a cooling station. And right now, my primary cooling station would be the Shrewsbury Borough building because it has a generator, and we know that we'll have AC there even if the air conditioning, even if the power's out over a big area. So, that's just a sample of what would go in there, but there's got to be something in there for flooding, or power outages, or the different disaster scenarios we might have.
I can give this to you, but it's a copy that I printed off of what was distributed to the rest of the borough council, and it's called Emergency Operation Plan, but it isn't addressing the specifics of either disaster or emergency. It's addressing really how personnel are used and an overview. So, I'm happy to give this to you because if it's something that you have and we become or decide to become a part of, then it certainly would be, I think, more efficient. But again, I'll give you this, and if you don't mind, could you do it, just let me know what it is.
Yeah, I'd be happy, you know, if the borough chooses to become a member, we can certainly incorporate the fire department's EOP into ours by reference. Currently, the SKEMA EOP is approximately 200 pages long, so it's a pretty significant document. And Todd Ziegler, who is the Township Manager, is the Secretary to the SKEMA Committee. And I'm sure that if you make an appropriate request to him, he'd be happy to share the EOP and the bylaws and the intergovernmental agreement document with you for your review and help you make your mind, you know, make the decision.
What do you think our next step should be? Should we form a committee to discuss joining and come up with the, I guess, the outline of what we're expecting from SKEMA?
So, when the initial IGA, that's basically what happened, is there was an exploratory meeting to find out which of the municipalities was interested, and then they discussed that among their councils. So, if you have a safety committee or an appropriate committee, you would refer that to. I think that, you know, the thing to do would then be for that committee to request from Todd those documents, so you can, the committee could review the intergovernmental agreement, the bylaws, and the existing EOP, in order to then come back to the full council with a recommendation.
Stan, what is the requirement from a mechan, I know we had brought Nate over. He's been very diligent and involved in this, and we looked at our tower, we looked at our old radio, which was analog. I'm sure you're using digital now. We did come up with two or three digital handsets that we have, but what other requirements would be involved for us as an expense that we would need to, you know, invest in?
So, when SKEMA was initially formed, Railroad Borough really did not have an EOC or EOP. They were actually dovetailed in with New Freedom Borough at the time. Shrewsbury Borough and Shrewsbury Township each had an existing Emergency Operations Center. So, that's what's in the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement, is that the, those municipalities will continue to maintain the EOCs that they have with their own funding, not with the mixed funding of SKEMA. And that's specified in the intergovernmental agreement. So, it would be perfectly suitable for you as a borough if you have space that you consider to be your Emergency Operations Center. The radios that you're referring to, I believe, are probably the county radios, so perhaps you have a base station and some handhelds?
Just the handhelds.
Okay, just handhelds, okay.
The old base station, Nate was in, look, sorry, Nate was in, looked at that, and that's pretty much garbage at this point.
Right, well, so, several years ago, all of the previous generation of radios were replaced at the county's expense. So, there was somewhere an inventory of whatever number of handhelds or base stations you had. I know what I did is, the SKEMA had already been formed, so I got an inventory of what the covered, the member municipalities had, and then I worked with county and the county contractor to see to it that we got an appropriate number of matching radios back. So, I'm not sure how that went for you, but anyway, the point is, you would maintain ownership of any equipment you have now. And so, let's say, for example, if, if the disaster is that there's an apartment building fire here in the borough, and if you were a member of SKEMA and you had, there goes your fire department right now, which I receive all their calls on my pager because they do cover Shrewsbury Township. But anyway, if the disaster were here in your municipality, then as the EMC, I would, I'd want to use the closest Emergency Operations Center to the disaster. I would come to your EOC and use it in support of the fire company if they, if that was needed, just for example. So, in the, in the intergovernmental agreement, you as a borough would continue to own those radios, and you would continue to be responsible for the support and maintenance of the EOC, and I would work with you on that. Nate is one of my volunteers, so he would, you know, certainly could still be in the In the startup, the funding for SKEMA comes from a per capita funding that the municipalities agreed to, and so, there would be no upfront buy-in at all, okay? Your first three years would be year one, and I will give this to you, year one would be at 16 cents per capita, and then years two and three would each be at eight cents per capita. And Todd came up with these numbers based on a 2010 census of 4,464 as your population. So, your first year of membership would be 7, 14, 24. Your second and third years would be $357.12. I believe the fourth year, they dropped down to four cents per capita, so it'd be half of $357.12. And then after that, I think they're going to not collect funds starting in year five because we have a pool of money here already, but I will give this to you.
So, I think what you're, is there an equipment list of what we are expected to have or what we should have?
No, no, there's, so there's no anticipated equipment. We would work with you with whatever you've got. And based on, once we review all that, we could decide how glorious we want your, how much do you want to put into your EOC, but that'd be entirely your decision, and there's no, there's no requirement from SKEMA's part as to what that looks like.
Could we say use our council chamber as our?
Absolutely. Shrewsbury Borough's EOC is their council chamber.
That's right, they have everything in the closet right there.
And if you, if your committee or any of you would like to come and see either of the EOCs prior to your decision, I would be happy to give you a nickel tour of either or both.
You know, this is something that we kind of started discussing a year ago. You were supposed to come, and unfortunately, COVID hit, and we had to put that, put this all off for a year. So, we basically don't need to do any improvements on our antenna, as long as we have handhelds. We really don't need a base. We can use those handhelds instead of a base, correct? Because at first, we were looking at having to run wires and redo the antenna when Nate was down. That's good to know that we wouldn't have that major investment there with equipment.
Correct.
How many events did you respond to last year? And what were they?
Okay, so I put up on this slide, and you probably can't see it because they're small. Last year, we, and again, EMA doesn't respond, we support. So, we may not do anything, but we're ready, okay? So, the things that we were ready to act on were the tractor-trailer fire on I-83, and we actually had a part to play. We used amateur radio, citizen's band radio, and social media to advise people of the accident and the road closure and delay. We responded, we did respond for the food points of distribution that occurred at Sesmo Haddock High School by going and assisting the York County Food Bank with traffic control. And we enlisted some volunteers from the York County React Team, which is a ham radio group, to come and help with that. And we also did storm assessment. Anytime that there's a storm that comes through that has the potential for either flood or wind damage, we go out and, you know, if there's any reports of any. Because one of the things that happens is all damage needs to be reported to York County OEM within 24 hours with what we call a windshield assessment. You don't have to get out and talk to anybody, you just do a rough estimate of what the damage looks like, report that. All counties report their damage from a particular incident up to PMA, and then PMA uses, compiles all those counties. And if it's severe enough to get a federal disaster declaration, these are the reports that they use to decide that. But going back, I just, I went back three years. In 2018, we responded to the MIPS hazmat incident north of Glen Rock. They had a leak of heating oil there. We played a very large part in the roof collapse of the Glen Rock Schoolhouse apartment. We helped house the residents that had no place else to go for a week, and we worked directly with the Red Cross to bring in monetary assistance for them during that time. And just, we had a lot of thanks to give to the Glen Rock Borough and the Ambulance Club for letting us use their building. Also, that same year, you remember, we had a lot of summer flooding, and then in August, on August 31st, we had a 10- to 12-inch rain that occurred over in Chansford Windsor Townships. Well, that extended back into Glen Rock a little bit, and we had, ended up bringing in volunteers to clean up trout run. In 2019, we had summer heat and rain, so we had cooling stations open at a couple of different places. We had a hazmat incident on Union Boulevard. I really didn't have to do anything but have that fire spread. There is a facility there that has a five-mile evacuation radius if there's a fire, and the fire was next door. So, I was, I was a little worried about that one. Also, we discovered in one of the municipalities a hoarder, and so I went and tried to approach that person, do an assessment of the situation, and try to put together a mitigation proposal for the municipality. And then whenever there's winter storms, we're always ready to open warming stations if the temperatures get excessively low, and to also use amateur radio to back up the county system in the event that we have road closures and the possibility of people stranded on any of the roads or highways.
Does anyone else have any questions?
What's our next steps in our efforts in the borough council?
I think our next logical step would be to set up a committee and have some discussion. I'd like, really like to hear Todd's view on things. He usually has a pretty good opinion. So, yeah, I think that would be the next step. If anyone has.
I'd be happy to volunteer to be on that group.
Okay.
I think, I think. Walter was mayor and instigating this.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a good, good idea for Ann and Kim. And is anyone else interested? Okay, all right, one of the three, have you done?
Can I ask?
Sure.
Yeah. One more then.
Do we have to have anything, you know, like in case of any type of chemical spills and that type of thing, do we have to have a, have anything here or a group here that would handle that, or is that done by someone you call in?
So, your, your fire department is an excellent fire department with well-trained staff backed up by county special crews. So, in the event of a hazardous material incident of any kind, your fire company would be first on scene. They have material to absorb, they have booths that they can put down. If they need additional resources, they simply call county, and county has a specialty hazmat team that comes down with another truck with more of all that stuff. And they also can bring the Department of Environmental Protection down. That's what happened with the MIPS hazmat. The heating oil was leaking from a tank used to heat the facility, and it got into the little creek that runs into the south branch of the Cudores down there. And I actually did respond on scene to that one because I ended up following up with the DEP to make sure that the owner of the property was doing everything that they were ordered to do to clean that up, so. But it starts with your fire department, and all the local fire departments all have mutual aid agreements in place, as do all the EMAs. So, SKEMA, if we need more resources, we can notify county, and the Office of Emergency Management will send personnel or get surrounding EMAs to Management will send personnel or get surrounding EMAs to send personnel. So we have these automatic, kind of, the way that, when, when you read about NIMS, the National Incident Management System, it, it expands from the most local and goes out and it goes up. And above the county level, we have something called the South Central Task Force. And that task force is made up of all of the police, fire, EMS units in eight counties. And they all back each other up. And every couple of years, they have a big drill, multi-day drill, and they'll create a scenario. And so the last one that I was involved with, with was up at the Harrisburg International Airport. They used the old terminal for a hostage-taking scenario. And so they had a big training day. So your, your professional and professional volunteer organizations are constantly doing that stuff, preparing for it.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, I know we have quite a few members of our volunteer fire company that are hazmat certified. They go through training every year. They're, they stay up on all of that. I know I, several years ago, went through hazmat training and boy, it's something. It's a, it's a couple of weeks of intense studying and I think we used the, the Fire Academy up at Amingestill. And these guys are dedicated that go through that. So know that we have several of our locals that are very well-trained to handle just about any situation.
Okay. Well, then why don't we go ahead and set up the committee made up of Kim and Ann, Inga and Dave? And with the goal of meeting with Todd and doing some further exploring on what's required, what other costs there might be for us beyond the, the per capita fees.
Yeah, it sounds like that's kind of come down because a couple of years ago, I think we needed to have the base station and a lot of other equipment involved. And that'll really save by just being able to use those, those handhelds.
Well, originally, when this subject first came up with the committee, they were thinking more along the lines of like the, the police agreement with a, a cash buying upfront. But I persuaded them from that idea. So that's why there's, there's no, there's no big buying at the beginning. It's just, once you enter into the schedule, you'll just pay what the other municipalities paid per capita for your year one, two, and three and four.
I think pertaining to that prior, the buy-in would have been about $7,000, am I correct?
No. It was, it would have, it would have been those three years is what they were thinking. But, you know, there's really no need for that. Simply that you, if you just pay the, use the same schedule that the member municipalities already did, that's very equitable.
And Todd, yourself, can help us through this process?
Absolutely.
All right. I know where to get to, so.
Are we thinking we can, we need just a month till next meeting and we could get a report or it'll be an ongoing thing?
It's up to Todd and.
I'll take charge of contacting Todd if you want.
That's fine, yeah, because you've been in touch with Todd and EMS and that would be fine.
All right. Why don't we do that? And we'll just get a report next month and see where we are. Okay? All right. Good. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming and going, and going through the, the presentation with us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry it took so long to get you here, but COVID knows no bounds apparently.
And during your, your month process or at any time, don't hesitate to, you know, contact myself or, or Todd for anything.
All right. Thank you again. Okay. That is going to take us to the President's Report. Do you want to, you know, say a couple of words about the concert or do you want me to? Okay. All right. Well, first thing on my President's Report, we're going to have a concert. It's going to be August 8th, which is a Sunday. It'll be Sunday in Marge Goodfellow Park. We're going to have food trucks. And the food truck proceeds, a portion of that will benefit our rec department. And we'll also have games for the kids, which rec will be putting on. And then we also have a concert scheduled for three weeks later on, help me.
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth. And that will be a bluegrass concert, a local, a local person. Troy Engel and Southern Skies, you may have heard of him. But he's Nashville famous and he's on billboard charts. So that'll be the second concert. And we have one penciled in for three weeks after that, but we don't have funding for that yet. So that is probably going to happen. We're going to try to make that happen. Rec has been very receptive to, to helping put these on. So I think it'll, it'll be a real great time. It'll be coming out of COVID and hopefully we, we won't have any more, any more COVID viruses after that. So that, that'll be a fun, fun thing. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I do. Now, I know there's going to be beer sales.
Uh, we're trying. I don't, what's, what's the status on that?
Well, unless there's any cooperation, then I would say no, it would be an outside vendor at this point.
Right. I think it's just.
You can't do it? I thought they had like.
They, they let their off-site license lapse because they save $1,000 a year on insurance and they just don't have the money right now. So we're looking at a possible other beer vendor. We're looking possibly for wine tasting and wine sales while we're there, just to try to make it a nice, fun event for family.
Are they going to have wristbands, check IDs when folks come in and do wristbands?
Well, that normally is what happens when you have a beer vendor. So yes, I, I would say they'll probably like buy tickets and have a wristband for ID checks.
Insurance?
That'll have to be provided by the vendor. We're not, okay, it's 800 bucks and I don't want to get into us having to have the liability on that.
Okay. Very good. Those are any other questions I have?
Okay. All right. So that should be fun. We would like, or I would like, and rec definitely would like, to open a community center. Even Philadelphia has opened their community center. So I think what we're, what we're talking about is opening it with, with the understanding that it's at, at the user's own risk. We're going to keep it to 45 people, which will allow most sports to go in there, pickleball and whatnot. People will clean it before and after. They will be responsible for their own cleanliness. We will provide the N cleaner, the spray cleaner. They will be responsible for social distancing and CDC guidelines. The list N chemicals are, four gallons is 86.99. So if you figure we need, I would probably order $400 worth of chemicals and a fog, well, you said the fogger you have to get suited up for. So I'm, I'm going to say that we need just the spray bottles. And so that saves money there. So I would, at this time, entertain a motion to open the community center and purchase $400 worth of chemicals, which can be here in a couple of days.
Effective what date?
Let's call it March 20th.
I'd like to make a motion that we open the community center with the, the mentioned conditions along with the chemicals.
Okay. Burnell seconded it. Any other discussion? Call for a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Community center will be open. I'm going to say March 20th. It gives us enough time to revise the contract, to show the details and to get the chemicals in. I'm going to say March 20th is a good date.
Is it the senior center?
The senior center, that will be up to them.
Okay. Because I guess they're limited as to space in someone's rooms.
Yeah. Correct.
They have not made the decision to open the senior center as such. They have to come in at this time. So, you know, I will pre-lead that here, meaning this, this one's open. And then it's up to them.
Okay, great. We got some thank yous. Patty, oh, I'm not going to do our name justice. Warsa Bakker, I believe. And anyway, from the Lines Club. And she thanked us for allowing them to continue even though the line, lineuses were disbanded. We gave them some uses in the community center to continue their efforts. Kim and I and Inga went to the NCR at, at their invitation to, to view the railroad and to talk about some activities. Like for one instance, they're going to put on their website our concerts coming up. And we're going to put on our advertisements that, you know, there's a train ride before the concert if, if people would like to take it. So there's some synergies there that we can, that we can do. And they sent us thank yous. In fact, I'll give these to you so if you'd like. Oh, they sent you one too? Yeah. And we'll put them in the office, I guess. So did, Kim, if you, did you want to talk about the meeting at all? Or are you going to talk about it in your mayor's report with me at the train station?
The only meeting I had, you were there.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just, which one of us wanted to talk about? I guess that's basically it. It's just the advertising and the things that they could possibly do with the rec. One other thing rec is going to do is they're going to schedule a chili cook-off and it'll be during, during the cowboy days at the train station. So you got the chili, the cowboys, you know, kind of all goes together. And it should be, that should be a fun event for people in New Freedom as well.
We're trying to open up the potential for us to work together with them. If rec can have something and tie in with the railroad, vice versa, the borough, Trail Towns, you know, there, there are a lot of options that we can have, that we can all work together and all benefit for the community's sake. And I think it's a great idea. I'm so glad they were very courteous and they have some good ideas. They have a great marketing team down there. I felt very impressed with their marketing team and that they're going to also come up with some, some good ideas and, and hopefully they can work, once we get a new rec director on board, that they can all work together. And I, I think it'll be a great benefit.
I do too. We, one thing that we noticed that Tanya is sitting two spaces to the left and Andrew, Andrew is sitting next to me. So Andrew's taking more of an active role and he's up to speed and he's ready to jump in. So tonight, I would like to have someone make a motion to go ahead and appoint Andy for, as, into the secretary position, the assistant treasurer position, and also the chief operating officer for the New Freedom Borough pension.
I need a motion to introduce leadership into the positions of secretary.
Assistant treasurer.
And.
Pension.
Pension.
CAO.
Okay.
Burnell seconds. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pos. My vote is aye. Without getting into a lot of detail, we passed the property maintenance code and it's very far sweeping and it has a lot of city-oriented sections to it. So what I would like to do is appoint a maintenance committee to be made up of Bruce Merrill and, oh, you want to do?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. Dennis and Burnell and, did you, did you want to do it or did you want to just do the, the EM?
Okay.
Okay. So the Dennis, Burnell, and David and Bruce. And they will go through the property maintenance agreement and pick out things like ratcheals on basement windows and so that we can have something that's very enforceable. Because there are, there are some things and hopefully it won't take long. And normally, it is what municipalities do. They just strike paragraphs that aren't applicable to their, their situation. So hopefully we'll be able to do that and have a report that possibly next meeting. Okay. I want you to talk about the bank line.
Okay.
Okay. I wanted to say a couple of words. I know a lot of people have seen some activity regarding Resolution 2018-2 in Borough Council chambers over the last three weeks. And if you were listening, you probably heard our solicitor talking to somebody and telling them that they weren't allowed to talk to Borough employees because they filed a lawsuit. Well, in keeping with transparency, we wanted to discuss the actions of council that have come up over the last few weeks involving Larry Lamott's property and Resolution 2018-2. This is primarily to curtail speculation and we're going to present only facts here. We don't, we don't want to get into speculation because a lot of the things that have been said were basically taking the facts and extrapolating. So basically Larry Lamott inherited the building and the ground it sat on in 1995. Larry wanted to open a restaurant. To open the restaurant required parking and council at the time told him that zoning required additional parking. Larry acquired two lots in 97 and 98 so he could conduct business. Council put a note on the, was basically what was a reverse subdivision plan stating he needed council approval to separate the lots. These notes were to ensure that he maintained the parking for the business. In 20, in 2009, Larry's business was shut down and the building was condemned for structural defects. The lots are on separate deeds and are marketable as individual lots. There was an 18,000 plus lien on Larry Lamott for past due utilities to New Freedom Borough. From our December 2010 minutes, late councilman, Mr. Gene Andrews, is quoted as saying he is shocked about the $18,000 due the borough by the owner Lamott's. The borough manager, Tanya, explained that the liens were being satisfied by the sale of the lots. She advised that only the parcel remaining, the only parcel remaining is the building and the land directly under the building. So there were no additional lots. They, they were being sold off. And this also shows that the 2010 Borough Council was very well aware that the lots were being sold off. They accepted a check for $18,000 because of it. In 2013, a subdivision plan was presented to New Freedom Borough. This plan was approved by the Borough Zoning Board and the Borough Planning Commission. You can't lick your fingers when you're wearing a mask. The plan was submitted to and unanimously approved by the 2013 sitting New Freedom Borough Council. These plans clearly show that Lot 1 and 3, the lots in question in the lawsuit, previously owned by Lamott, are now part of the Franklin Land Development Plan. They also show that only the building footprint, and that means only the land directly under the building, is owned by Goldfather York LLC. This again shows council's approval of the lot disposition because they approved plans that showed what happened to the lots. In September of 2018, the footprint lot of the condemned building and the condemned building were sold by Goldfather LLC. In October of 2018, Resolution 2018-2 was passed. It was characterized as a resolution to clarify the Lamott lot transfers. This was, in our opinion, true because the purpose of the resolution was to clarify what had already been done in 2010 and 2013. It uses words like reapproving and ratifying. It was not an ordinance because it did not approve or change anything and was not new information. We had a committee that we put together to review this and the borough stands behind the decisions of the 2010 council, the 2013 zoning hearing board, the 2013 planning commission, the Department of Environmental Protection. the Department of Environmental Protection, New York County Planning, and also the Erosion and Sediment Control People, and the 2013 Council and the 2018 Council. So I just wanted you guys to know that. So, even though I was advised probably not to do it, I, I decided that we should know. All right. That completes the president's report. Does anyone have any questions on anything?
Andy, you discussed the reopening of the community centers. Do you have any indication whether or not Suzanne will be collecting taxes up there? Have you had any discussions prepared?
Uh, I ha, I haven't. This is just kind of, we just, uh, decided to do it a couple of days ago, so.
She, she has inquired, yes.
Okay, so she probably will, don't they?
She probably will.
Yeah, I think, yes, since she's inquired, I would imagine they will now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Uh, that brings us to the consent agenda for March. I would like to point out that the, um, delinquencies for, uh, water and store are very low. They're down to, uh, less than 30,000.
What, what was the big change in that? I was surprised that usually the numbers are on 45, 50.
Forty-five to 50, yeah.
A lot of it was properties that sold that had loans.
So they just fulfilled, is that a form of backlog in the system from your county?
No, it's really a backlog of people that did it take years. And the properties were sold, so the lien's cleared.
Clear.
So the property could be sold. That's what we get all night. And I think there was one share sale in there also.
Okay. Okay, I see more of those product than share sales.
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda for March 2021.
Okay, I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a second from Dave. Is there any, any further discussion?
Yes, on, uh, previous council, uh, February 8th council meeting, uh, I'd like to make a correction on the second page. I had informed the coun, oops, I had informed the council that Shrewsbury Borough had invested $1,500 into new equipment so they could have Zoom meetings. I did not request to purchase additional electronic equipment with masks. It's kinda hard to really understand. I was just informing the council as to what the, the Borough had done to accommodate the Police Commission. Um, and I don't recall President Bobby agreeing to authorize $1,500. I know council never voted on it.
It's just a misprint, I think.
Yeah, so I would like to see that changed.
Yeah.
Before we, um...
But we could approve it with a correction, yes?
With a correction, please.
So we have one correction. Any other discussion? Call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay. And we had public comment. I don't see, please. Are there any, oh, yeah, fire call.
Do you need to have those here?
No, no, I think she just had a question about the volunteer credits. Actually, Andy's gonna talk about the process and procedure in his, um, in his manager's report, so I'll, I'll wait for that to happen. Is there any other comment on the agenda items?
One, one thing, Andy, cause it's in the report here, the water use study, that the water use in, uh, February, the average day of water use, it's like 220,000 and in January it was about almost 260,000, 40,000. Did you get, did you repair leaks in there some period that might explain the big drop? Pretty significant drop in the water usage.
Um, we didn't have any, we didn't have any leaks that we repaired, but I, we had a couple of less days in the month, being February, you know, with only, uh, 20, we have 28 days.
Yeah, I, I, well, these were, I just thought maybe this leak was fixed because it might have.
Yeah, I, I noticed we weren't running the wells as much because the waters, people weren't using the water like they were. Yeah, which was good because we, last year we used a lot of, used a lot of work. But I think a lot of people were, were home and, and not working and it made a big difference. And it could be kids going back to school and people going back to work. Might've made a little bit difference in the usage too. That's what I'm thinking. I mean, it'll, it'll show here in the next month or two, you know, maybe go through what it's gonna be.
What, what month was the big fire, but it, did that, did that matter at all? Was that January?
Probably last year. I think that was December.
Cause it was, I don't have, I don't, I didn't bring the, the summer one in, but, uh, as I recall, they were, they were pretty hot, pretty hot too that one.
Yeah, cause they used a lot of water out of the, uh, out of the hydrant. Because there was, uh, they were kinda complaining they couldn't get real good pressure out of that hydrant. I'm assuming once we get that new water tank up there, that'll make a big difference. That'll make a big, big difference. They, they really had a problem with that. And they were up there for about five days solid until they could get a company to come in and spread out that water.
We got, we got asked how much water they used, right? Cause I mean, we're gonna...
You said, you said a bill to?
Yeah, I, I sent a bill to them.
Is there any response?
I didn't expect any response at all.
Is it normal, I know I'm probably, I'm gonna pick a year, uh, for water to have about three weeks ago in my neighborhood, and I called different neighbors up because it was called to my attention, that when they ran the water, that there was a very, very strong odor from the water.
What kind of odor?
Chlor's and kind of like rotten eggs, you know? So I went to my faucet and I did the same thing and I, you know, opened it up and sure enough, I had the same thing. And I spoke to about three or four people. It's, it's in my development and they had the same problem. So is it, is it periodically when you change things with the water? I don't know much about water.
There's not much change. I mean, we get water from your water company, we get to fix, fix the map, we'll produce a wheel.
It was very powerful. You know, when, when you tasted it, I drank it to taste it, it had a very foul taste. And that was for about maybe two days.
I, I drank water, believe it or not, this Borough water, I was about five years old.
No, you know, I, I said that I would address it and I, I would check on it. So how often actually is the water tested?
It's monthly, right?
Yes.
Is it every month?
Oh, yeah. We test, we run pH and chlorine residuals every day. Um, and then of course D E P has this on a schedule on, on sampling, so.
Is that out of the pumps, Tony, or is that in line? I know you go to people's house, actually, you go to people's houses and things.
Something, something like what Inga's talking, you know, you almost have to tell us the date that that happens.
Yeah.
When you come back up there and it's not there and you can't solve it.
So should I, like, next time it happens, should I take a sample, a water sample and...
You know, where you, where you standing by the sink and drinking the water and the fumes coming up out of your, it's crazy, like, you know? I don't know what.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be able to explain hydrogen sulfide or, there's no hydrogen sulfide in any, any of the wells or your water company water, you know?
No. I think if it does happen again, you probably should take a jar of water and get, get it on.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that because, you know, they asked, you know, what could be done about it and, and they were concerned and, and obviously because I tasted it, you know, but I, I said, should I put it like in my refrigerator because I'm, you know, I don't know.
There's no work around your house, your hardware.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, I can bring that back, thank you.
Yeah, well, I'll corroborate, you know, lately I have seen on Facebook, God bless it.
Yeah.
Uh, people complaining about, about the water, but I've tried to explain as, that, you know, with what is going on and they may have some, some issues with water, brown water and again, open the faucets, let it run, you know, and, and, but I have had some complaints personally from people that say the water just has an odd taste to it and also chlorine.
Very, very powerful.
Yeah, but D, D P requires a certain minimum chlorine signal, right?
Yes, and it says more now than what it used to be, so.
Right, we know it is.
Not something that you have to...
Where does that come into the system?
Do they require that?
Yes.
Okay.
Where does that chlorine go into the system? At each of the pump houses?
Where the wells, it's injected there.
That's where it's from.
And it's monitored there also, there are monitors.
No, they thought maybe at that particular time, maybe a pipe had broken and, you know, they were repairing it and nobody was aware that they were supposed to, you know, let the water run for a while and they asked me these questions and I didn't have the answers.
Well, I've been telling them, I've posted on Facebook because of replacing the pipes and some of the complaints that we've had and that's why I asked about those, uh, the new valves. Did they come in?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got, we've got those new valves. I got two people that I'll have to come in and, and get those for them and tell them they have to bring them, the old ones back in, return them to us.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, can they be refitted?
No.
Now, okay. And that answers that.
Uh, okay, can we, uh, we're gonna do, go ahead and add the manager's report in here cause there's several things that Andrew wanted to bring up.
Sure, go ahead and get started. I won't go over everything that's in the manager's report. Obviously, a good amount of time was spent during the month of February with staff and especially with, with Tanya, getting up to speed on everything. I, I appreciate everybody's willingness to discuss the current topics and the history of the Borough with me. First item and, uh, is the volunteer tax credit. As you recall, the ordinance back in 2020 allows a, uh, volunteer from the fire B M S to receive a tax rebate on real property, real estate, or earned income tax or a combination of both not to exceed $500. So we do have a list from the fire company that's provided to you tonight as well as kind of a flow chart that summarizes the ordinance that we put together to provide to the volunteer companies as well as internal that we can use to kind of follow through every year and make sure that the process is, uh, process is followed. So you do have a list of some volunteers that are eligible to receive the credit and we'll work with them going forward to decide whether they're going to use the real property tax credit or the earned income tax or a combination of both.
And council, council has to do to approve that?
I would like to call for a motion to approve the list as presented. Okay, Danny and Burnell second. Any other discussion on the list? Okay. All in favor of approving the list as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye.
Thank you. And then from that point, we'll actually issue the tax credit certificate and it's up to that volunteer to decide and move the process forward. One of, one of the other items that we worked on were a couple of lease agreements. Uh, tonight up for approval is a lease agreement with a property owner of a Borough Borough that had his property surveyed and realized he placed a small improvement on property that's owned by New Freedom Borough.
It was a chicken coop.
Is this the, uh, the house being redrawn along the bike trail?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, and the, the lease agreement was reviewed, um, by the individual as well as legal counsel. Uh, it's pretty much a small piece, um, which consists of about a 30 by 72 foot area and will encompass that, that improvement, that chicken coop. So the lease is basically a dollar annual lease with an annual renewal. Uh, the lessee is willing to provide, and he's obviously a professional videographer. He's willing to provide a service to the Borough annually at no cost, um, and as we decide that special events or other community minded events come up at no cost to the Borough. So it's a little bit of a, kind of monetary gain on the lease, but a service gain.
Does it need some money to each council? Does, doesn't it?
I was gonna say that.
Uh, probably the most important thing is it's a piece of scrap land. We can't really access it. It's not anything. And he just accidentally put his chicken coop on it. So I, I don't see any hardship to any Borough citizen.
Steve, do you know that is that with the property owner of Dow or is it traveled with the property until they get recorded? For instance, you travel with the property, whoever, something, they may own it or something?
It, it's specific to this individual, but I'm not sure if it's assignable or not. Given the fact that it's a one-year term, it can be, you know, terminated obviously.
Yeah.
Not assigned.
Okay, so if it's sold, then we'll just, it's new property.
Right.
So we need a motion to approve that, please.
We wish to approve the lease, uh, dollars, of course.
Yes, I'll read the second to that. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye.
Okay, I'll keep going down the list. Uh, the next item is the 2020, 2021 general obligation note. You have in your packet tonight, a list of, uh, projects in the general fund, sewer fund, as well as the water fund, uh, as well as a summary sheet provided by Darrell Peck of Concord Finance, who we met with last week to discuss maintenance borrowing as well as refinancing the existing debt. Some of the projects, general fund would be to replace the roof of the public works facility, uh, complete various improvement projects, road improvement projects throughout the Borough, including, uh, alleys and, and other roadways, an overlay of the Marge Goodfellow Park parking lot, which is right along the rail trail, as well as an overlay of the community center and Borough office facilities. So that would be encompass the borrow needed for the general fund. Sewer fund, there are some improvements outlined in the budget, the five-year capital improvement budget, as well as installing additional aerator racks and larger blowers and the whole, um, nitrogen and phosphorus removal. Just a bit, just a bit. Uh, as well as to begin design and construction of a wastewater treatment plant expansion project. And finally, the water fund, pretty simple, that's for designing and construction of the replacement water tank.
Of note is this, this is a, um, it's, it's like your home equity loan. I mean, we basically draw down on it for, so for example, the sewage treatment plant upgrades, uh, some of those are gonna be reimbursed at 60% by Shrewsbury Borough. So when we draw down against it, we'll be able to pay it back right away whenever Shrewsbury Borough pays us back. So it's really a, a home equity line of credit that allows us at current rates, which are like 1.8% to borrow now as opposed to borrowing when we need it in six months, which we don't know what the interest rates will be. Given the price of crude, they'll probably be higher.
And just so, on a Shrewsbury concept, the inter municipal agreement gives them a few options on how to pay. And they could say, thank you for financing that and we'll continue to make our 60% payment of debt service on an annual basis and not pay a once in a while. Just be aware that that... that, that may be something that they want to continue.
Yeah, that's actually true.
And we need to have that back.
So. I was just gonna say, did, was there something else?
I just wanted to call up, so basically, in order to move forward with this, uh, what you would need to authorize or consider authorizing tonight would be a request for proposals from banks to say, if this is the amount of money we want to borrow, what's the rate and what are the terms? Uh, and Darrell Peck will come back from Concord Finance with a list of those, um, proposals by April's meeting.
And I think the intention is, if you do authorize it, he comes back, that there will be an authorizing ordinance approved at your April meeting, authorizing actually three notes, one for the general fund, one for the sewer fund, one for the water fund in those amounts, and that the one thing that, and, you know, municipality borrowers might be having a bit of a problem in accordance with the local government, in the debt act, which requires an ordinance for that approval, and in accordance with the municipal revenue code, you have to have the reasonable intent of completing the pro, the projects for which you borrowed the money for. So therefore, I think.
Within three years.
Within three years, correct. So, you know, that's, that's sort of the parameters as to what you're, you know, if he comes back with proposals and, and you can't say, eh, maybe we won't do it, maybe we won't. He's coming back with a binding proposal, that interest rate will be, uh, will be open for approval for basically forty-eight hours. And it's not like, hey, let's defer to May and consider it more. So, just be aware of that dynamic, that if you approve coming back with proposals, it's gonna be presented to you at the April meeting for.
Yeah, but that has to be advertised, right?
And that's, and that's part of the, if you're saying go forward.
So, maybe till we move.
No, because you're, you're authorizing the advertisement of an ordinance.
Tonight, correct.
And that would be, in accordance with the local government, that act has a three-day ordinance, uh, which needs to be done two days before.
Yeah, the, the intention, of course, borrowing money, using that borrowing money, sticking it in banks up, but if we're moving a little higher, which is great, we wouldn't borrow the money.
Actually, actually, it's probably gonna be structured as a construction drawdown, like Yankee said, that you're not gonna draw down the money and start paying interest on it until you need.
Right.
Which is good, it saves you, you know, it saves you, because you can't, there's, there's very little opportunity during what's called arbitrage, which is investing at a rate higher than what you've borrowed it at, you know, the municipality, you know, it's nothing more than investments.
The other thing too is the, um, it's actually going to be, uh, three notes within one note, so there'll be three sections to the, to the loan, so that we can pay down on, you know, whatever we wanna pay down on. If we use it for, initially, we use it for the water tank, we could start with that, but we don't have to touch the other one. So, it'll, that, it'll be structured, so it's to our advantage to do it that way.
So, in other words, so we get these proposals first from these banks, they would, you know, of course, we'll pick the best proposal, and we then pass the ordinance?
So, what, what will happen is, uh, Mr. Peck will show up here at the April meeting, and he'll basically say, uh, that, yeah, we went out to the market, and here are the proposals that we got back, and the best proposal is by X Y Z bank at one percent interest or whatever.
Yeah.
And, uh, it is our opinion that's the best proposal for the borough, uh, and therefore we're recommending that the borough approve that by way of the authorizing ordinance, which would already be advertised.
Okay.
And so, the, the, the local government, due to debt act, allows you to advertise in advance of getting the proposals, and so therefore, the ordinance will be done in draft, that will be finalized that Monday, and in accordance with the local government, in the debt act, you need to do a post-advertising that says, here are all the changes that were made to the ordinance, we accepted the proposal from X Y Z bank at this interest rate, at whatever.
And a locked-in, locked-in rate?
Yeah, allows you to lock.
Not, not a flexible rate of any kind?
What's that?
Not a flexible rate, locked-in rate.
Well, they're, they may come back with some type of, of variable rate, but I would say right now.
See, that's what I'm worried about, that it would be a flex.
What, what we're expecting to see is a locked-in rate for at least a five-year period, if not longer.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're gonna take the longest period of fixed, given the current interest rates. Uh, also, there's no prepayment penalty on the loan, so, you know, as we continue to grow and our funding continues to grow, as, as Perkantine rents more and more and earned income goes up, we can pay those off quicker.
Yeah.
That's why we're dividing, you know?
That's my concern, you know, that it would flex rate, you know, if we seal it in for a period of time, I think it's great. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Does anyone, everyone understand what we're doing? Okay?
Yeah.
It'll get the rent paid.
Those projects, they need to be put out there for bid yet.
Yes, that's true. Yeah, this doesn't preclude bidding. Right. Okay, given that, I would accept a motion and approve the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and Burnell seconds, or Nina seconds? Okay, uh, with no other discussion, I would call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? My vote is aye.
Okay, well, we will have those proposals ready for the April meeting for council's review. Um, just a couple other items on the manager's report. Did have a Zoom call with DCNR regarding starting a peer study to look at the possibility of bringing on a recreation director, uh, and whether that would be a shared position. Uh, to get the process started, what they require is a, a peer study that their agent able to fund up to ten thousand dollars, it would require a thousand dollar cash match. Uh, we're able to look at possible intermunicipal agreement, obviously, then municipalities would split those costs. So, again, we're still working out the details, speaking with other municipalities in the area, seeing if that's a possibility. Obviously, DCNR's, uh, goal is to encourage intermunicipal cooperation in this, the EMA that goes with the, so.
They're gonna spend a thousand dollars and less if you find another municipality, right?
At this point, correct.
Because that is a contingent, that's the contingency with the grant for the rector act, that we have to partner with another municipality, can't just be the senior center who are talking about this, or whatever. So, it would have to be, you know, we're looking at possibly Shrewsbury Township.
If you said ten thousand dollars, I thought the grant was gonna cover.
This is just the study portion. They, they come in, they do a study, they say, yes, you need a rector actor, that would be great for the guys to have, we're gonna team with Shrewsbury Township, that's what this ten thousand dollars covers. They pay it, we just pay the thousand, so we're only paying ten percent. Then, they give us a grant, have to pay the sal, all salaries in the first year, then three quarters, then, you know, I'm done? Okay. Basically, we just need a thousand dollars to get it started.
Well, hopefully have more information. Uh, we do, working on getting the meeting set up with Shrewsbury Township to discuss that opportunity. Uh, just regarding some of the other.
I, I would like, if we could, just to speed things up, what, if we can make a motion to go ahead and authorize the thousand dollars on the, on the contingency that we find another borough to share the cost with, or share the rector actor with.
I'll make a motion that we authorize a thousand dollars to, about the study, if they're willing.
Okay, second.
And that's, that's, any municipal, I mean, if you have a borough that has a, a
Yeah, I mean, if it be, uh, Stewartstown, or it doesn't have to be, yeah.
And it, it doesn't have to just be one.
Yeah.
He was probably talking, you were.
I don't know.
I'm confused. Uh, any other discussion on the, the study? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? My vote is aye.
Uh, really, the other items are, are pretty small, just more administrative, so unless anybody has any questions, we'll, we'll go on to the next item.
Does anyone have any questions for Andy? Sorry, can I, just a minute? Oh, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It came here because of the.
It's like static right now.
Is it static or the fan?
It's the fan.
It's the fan.
It's the fan. It's the fan.
That's, it sounds different than the fan. I don't, I think that's stellar.
Everybody turn their ears off, is it?
We've got loose wire, I can't.
There it goes.
It's like a fan. It's like the old TV. All right.
It's just starting to get louder and louder.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we're here.
Um, well, now, he has something about Comcast lease, did we miss that?
But that was, that was just a, uh, across from the railroad property where the sewage plant sits, there's a, um, a Comcast, uh, go ahead.
It, it's just a Comcast building, a station that they, that they use. That lease, I believe, is up at the end of twenty twenty-one, and, uh, we've received notification from a broker of Comcast that they'd like to renegotiate it. Uh, he put some terms in there that just, there's no way you'd agree to that. So, went back and provided some comments back, and to date, we haven't heard anything. Now, this doesn't have anything to do with your, your franchise agreement or service anywhere, this is just for a land lease.
I'm still gonna get Netflix. All right, who's checking?
Yep, for nineteen dollars a month.
So, he'll come back with a new lease for the, for the.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to, um, commend the borough employees for their great job during the snowstorm. I know you were running a little bit thin there the one day, you know, we, we did, oh, as, as usual, we get a couple of complaints about driveways and, and dumping snow the, their own spots, but, uh, you guys had a, a rough year compared to, to last year, and I would like to say we, we certainly do appreciate it. Um, I don't really have anything until we hit the, um, the IGA or the police commission, um.
Why did, why don't you, why don't you wanna do the?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on vacation, I didn't go to the.
Oh, that's right, oh, that's, okay, you weren't here, so it is up to me.
Yeah.
All right, um, police commission discussion, we, uh, we did decide we are going to hold a police commission meetings over in Shrewsbury until the end of May. Um, that way, in the interim, we don't have to rush around here to try to get something set up for Zoom. They already have it, why reinvent the wheel right now if, if we're not gonna utilize it? There seems to work very well. Uh, we did get some information, I, uh, there was a New Freedom person that, uh, they were looking for for several days, she was found. We currently have another one from Seven Valleys. I would also commend the police department. I know, I live in South Constitution, and every time one of the police officers comes back to the station, he's got a spotlight on, and he's looking under everybody's porch, and he's looking down at the park, and they're, they're trying to find this girl, they've had helicopters out. I think she's from Seven Valleys.
She's from, the beer drop, yeah.
Oh, she is, but, but, but they found her car up at Seven.
Car was, yeah.
Yeah. Spud Feller Station. Um, police re, police report, um.
Dogs, I took it.
Yeah, they had dogs, helicopters, I mean, they had volunteers, Coleman Woods, and so far, they have not found her. Keep her in our thoughts and prayers, um, that she's safe and found. We've had some break-ins, major break-ins over in Stewartstown, I mean, to, about thirty cars. I will remind residents in New Freedom, lock your doors, don't keep your keys in your purse in your car. They walk by, they see it, especially at night. These guys are slick, they've got a flashlight, they walk by, zip it in, check a door, and they're, uh, they're gonna take whatever they can get their hands on. They did steal two vehicles. One was found in Glen Rock, and, uh, one they did find somewhere else, but they did recover both vehicles. But again, these were vehicles that somebody left the keys in their car. So, please, be diligent in keeping your house locked, keep your, keep your vehicles locked. Um. Trying to think, I, I lack my notes. Uh, again, we mentioned, um, one of the officers is having some health problems, uh, he will be off more than likely for quite some time. Um. Okay, I know they released, um, they did relea, the, the police union released a statement. I won't go into detail right now, but the statement basically says that, as you may all be aware, it was in the newspaper, we had an officer that was on a bus trip, went to Washington, um, got back on the bus before anything happened at the Ca, at the Capitol, came back home. Um, he, there was a quote in the newspaper that he had made, um, we don't know, they couldn't corroborate with the reporter that he said this, that it was a, just a, a fleeting bypassing comment of what he observed, but he was found, um, not innocent, but what, what, what did he do?
No charges.
There were, there were no charges, he's back on duty, and he's, uh, been released from that, uh, after further investigation by both federal and our local police department. So, I know a lot of people have some, uh, questions about that, that's been on the Facebook, so that's, that's been put to bed. Um, other than that, IGA is still meeting, we're really getting someplace now, finally. You and I need to get together, Bruce, if you would, sometime, uh, within the next week. I'd like to pick your brain and go over what we've come up with. Uh, we are looking at a third possibility, uh, instead of contracted, uh, we're looking at kind of a subsidiary, um, municipality agreement, where anything between, maybe, they would pay ten percent more than a contract community, and they would have to buy a certain percentage of PPU's, and also additionally, be responsible for the other fees should they drop out. We're looking at making that a three-year. Once you drop out, you can't come back in for three years, it's not gonna be a lot of this back and forth, you know, yes, this year we want in, next year we want out, we're working with that, with Peter Ruth, the commission has graciously given us, uh, his time for ten hours, and he's been a big, uh, a big help. We're going through some of the other police departments, IGAs, getting some great ideas from them of what to do, sometimes what not to do. So, I anticipate, we're still meeting every other Tuesday, as I said last meeting, anybody's invited. That's open to the public, we're gonna be holding that, prior to Shrewsbury's council meeting at six o'clock. We're probably gonna cut it short, six to six forty-five, because we're also, because again, we're having that in Shrewsbury at their borough building, and then we are open for a, uh, finance. And then we are open for a finance meeting, which many of us are planning on attending, because there's some, some things that we need to, to discuss when it comes to finance. Apparently, they're looking at purchasing a new, a new vehicle, but I'd like to know if we're hiring a new vehicle. What are we doing with the other fourteen that are out here? Are we trading them in? Or we, you know, how are we doing it? Chief thinks he got a real good deal, but I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't recall anybody, nobody, who approved it. You know, it's maybe fall under capital expenditures, but I think it needs to be discussed further. And I'm gonna attend that finance. What, what's the date of that? To find out. The sixteenth. The what? The sixteenth, March sixteenth, six o'clock is the IGA meeting. Seven o'clock is the finance. Are you on finance? Is that generally open to the public?
No, we don't, we don't normally.
Is there any reason it can't be?
I'd have to check. I mean, I wouldn't wanna answer that.
Okay, all right. I'll find out. I know I'm planning on being there, because I have a number of questions. Other, yes?
Jim, I understood it was gonna be a Zoom meeting, because Victoria wouldn't come in otherwise?
All, all of our Police Commission meetings will be Zoom. And they have advertised, or will advertise, that the remainder of the, the meetings up through the end of Ju-, or May will occur over at Shrewsbury's Borough Building. And basically, yes, that is the reason. Victoria has previously said she won't attend a meeting until a vaccine comes out. Well, it's out, you know. So we do have some other members of the community that it gives them an opportunity to participate that may not normally be able to. And we have, every now and then, we have one member of the Commission, but most of the Commission members are in attendance. We just spread out through the room, just like you guys are here. We'll have several Commission members up here, spread out, and then put them, the rest of the council members out here. Anybody else?
You have a Zoom and in-person meeting?
Yes, it is a combo meeting. That's why they, that's why.
Choice of Zoom, and you can still come in person?
That's why I said at our last council meeting, they invested fifteen hundred dollars so that they could do Zoom in the room with a large screen. They already had a projector. I had looked at a couple of things, and I thought, you know, the projectors really aren't that great. I think you're looking into, into doing something like that here. I know the large-screen TVs are cheap right now. A seventy, I found a seventy-inch TV for four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. You know, they used to be two, three thousand, you know, four K Q, QLEDs. So that's cheaper than what you can buy a projector for. The only thing is, we've gotta be able to hook up all of our microphones, and the technical aspects of it are really, oh, really not conducive to, I don't think, expending the money today in order to have a meeting here next month. So we'll be looking into that in the future.
So Mayor, how, if, if the public, is there a link that the public can download?
There is. It is always, it is always put on the police website and Facebook page. So please, and we're putting signs on the doors here that they're being held in Shrewsbury. We're kinda holding off for five or ten minutes in case people show up here. They see that it's Shrewsbury. They still have a time. It takes you, what, five minutes to get over to their building? But it's all over Facebook. It's on the webpage. I don't know. We should, we have that on our calendar right now, don't we? But we have, why don't we make sure we put that on our calendar that through March, the meetings will take place at Shrewsbury. Or the In-N-Out, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. Right now, I think that's all I have. Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you. Yeah, you noted earlier the committee concerning the Property Maintenance Code. I did provide, just a draft resolution to the, to the Borough for their consideration, because the Property Maintenance Code contemplates having a Board of Appeals. And therefore, the code does say that you should have at least three members appointed to your Board of Appeals and two alternates. So you need to start thinking potentially of five people that could populate that board. I don't expect that to be a real active board. Not many people appeal their, their Property Maintenance Code letters, enforcement letters. So, but that's just a technicality that you need to have it. And then also the appointment of Wade as your enforcement officer under that resolution. And then finally, the establishment of the fees for any hearings that you're gonna hold. So that, either if that's something the committee can look at, or just Borough Council generally start thinking about potentially members of your public that could populate that board.
Yeah, I think we actually already have a, a board in mind. Great. And you could probably, I guess, figure out from other municipalities what fees they charge and give us a recommendation and counsel. So that would probably be a good way to do the fees.
Great. That's it.
All right, thank you. Rec Council?
Um, I think mostly everything was already gone over about the concert being held on August eight. They already went over the scheme of the history stuff. Uh, the parade, July tenth is when they're planning on having it. Information will be emailed out. They would like to have it in honor of David Slenow.
Slenow.
Slenow. Somebody who, him and his wife were, lived here in town, were murdered a couple of months ago. So we're gonna reach out to the family.
I did.
Hope you didn't have.
I gave them Mary Ann's number, and called the daughter, and I, I probably know if it's her.
Okay. So they're, they're hoping to be able to hold it in honor of the family. There was also some talk about some other raffle tickets also going along with the pickups with the concert. They needed to solicit those donations from local businesses. That was it.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the raffle part?
The, what they were talking about with the raffling off hundred-dollar Walmart gift cards, hundred-dollar giant gift cards. Parade, I'm sorry, two parade participants and spectators for a dollar. I think this is a way to raise money.
They, that might be, we, we already asked the VFW to do a fifty-fifty. That's how they're gonna, and they're gonna clean up the grounds afterwards. I must've missed that. I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
You're talking about the parade, right, Murray?
Oh, that's what the parade.
That's what I, I thought that, that's what they said.
Oh, yeah, no, if that's, if that's what the parade, that's, I thought.
Yeah, so I think this is, this is in relation to the parade.
Oh, okay.
Nothing this year from REC for Easter for the kids? I know it's tough.
I, I don't think they're gonna be able to do that with.
Things are loosening up, but.
Yeah, I don't, right now, I don't think they're planning on anything for Easter.
The VFW, I believe, is having a, a drive-through.
Drive-by Easter.
Drive-by Easter.
For the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
It'll be just like it was at the Santa Claus Drag Tour.
So twenty-seventh, right, drive right through the parking lot. So everyone knows that.
Yeah, I know the bunny personally.
Oh.
I'm the bunny.
Oh, yeah, that's why I know you personally.
No, it's the original Easter bunny coming from, where does he live?
You guys are ruining it for me?
There may be children watching.
Yeah, I know.
Did you say the parade is the tenth of July?
Uh, that sounds right. July tenth, yes.
Okay, I was gonna say, I just, just wanted to be sure, because I might know some people that may wanna be here, so. I mean the participant, not.
Yeah, that is the week of the Lions Carnival. Just to remind you, that begins, I guess, the fifth to the, to the tenth. And as I said last meeting, after the parade, they're gonna get the amusement company to open up early so that hopefully we can keep, you know, people in town, they don't leave. Because that Friday and Saturday for the Lions, they make more money that, that fireworks night, which is the ninth, than all the other nights combined. So please get the word out that we are still having a carnival the week of the sixth with fireworks the ninth.
Can we get that on our website too, under activities or?
Kitties will, fireworks will be the seventh, which is a Wednesday. And again, the parade there. REC, I guess, is, how are they trying to get folks? They usually get Girl Scouts, churches.
That they're email campusing. They, they have all the same emails from the parade in the past.
Okay, all right.
We only miss the ones.
Is, is Shrewsbury still doing theirs the week before?
They are, and this, I think, will be the only year they do that the week before. That caused a lot of problems. Senior Senator?
Their meeting is this Wednesday, and I think I did share with everyone the information about what they're doing. They have been applied for grants, received money for grants, have new hardware and software. Their aggregate meals distribution is increasing. Nicole Strassman has been there. She's made changes to the Facebook, and she's putting out newsletters. She has quizzes and time tests, and there's a lot of interest with Senior Center. Financially, I go back to August of two thousand and nineteen, when they, or shortly thereafter, they approached to have their rent forgiven. At this point, they have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the bank. Half of it is already obligated for grants. You know, it's the grant money that came in, and it's obligated to be spent in a certain way. But they are doing very, very well. And at this point, I would like to request from Borough Council that I no longer be the liaison. We were overseeing a lot of the things that were happening, because we were concerned about their stability. And I think they have a very good board and a very good assistant director and.
Yeah, I think we're good.
I think we can leave.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, they're still gonna send us reports, though?
I'm going to request that. I'll go to the meeting. I'll be involved with the meeting on Wednesday night. I was wanting to, I'm gonna drop the liaison position, and would they send me information?
That'd be good.
If, if you want, we could request that they come and report to us twice a year.
I, I really don't want them to, I don't think. I, I, just, just, you know, maybe you could casually mention, don't wait till you get into our straits. If there's a problem coming up, come to us sooner, sooner rather than later. But yeah. But I think, I think we should be good. I think they've got a really great bunch of people over there, and I think that's great. Okay. Did I miss anybody? Does anybody have anything else to say? Okay. Then we'll get into business. We already appointed Borough Secretary, Assistant Treasurer, the Pension, the CIO. I would entertain a motion to appoint Wade as the Code Enforcement Officer and Andrew as the Deputy Code Enforcement Officer for the Property Maintenance.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Wade as the.
Code Enforcement Officer.
And then the Deputy.
Bernal seconds? Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Those? No, that is aye. Okay. We have an ordinance. We've had a REC Commission, REC Board for a long time. It apparently was an ad hoc thing, so we formalized it by coming up with ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two. This is an ordinance establishing a Recreation Commission, defining the duties of the Commission, and outlining reporting requirements by the Commission to the Borough. And I would, and this has been advertised, so you can adopt it tonight by motion?
Make a motion if we adopt the ordinance.
Sorry, twenty twenty-one dash two.
Twenty twenty-one dash two.
Inga seconds? Any discussion on the recreation? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those? No, that is aye. Well, the railroad property lease was a checking fee, I guess. And then we also did the RRT for the finance, so that's fine. Okay, and then we're going to have a short executive session involving a legal matter. And personnel. Okay, we're back. Our executive session was about a legal action and a personnel item. Next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody? Okay. And that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Andy?
Oh, sure.
Just a quick thing. One thing Lisa had put in the, on Facebook was that if anybody wanted to find out what we're gonna be doing with the road, to come to the meeting. Do we, do we have an official thing that we can say to people, so we don't keep that?
Oh, sure, yeah. You could tell them that asphalt production will start again shortly, like April first, and it's our intent to pave Constitution and Franklin. And we're actually going, we were gonna have to patch Main Street, but we've talked to Penda, and we are going to be doing a burn-to-burn, full, full overlay milling, milling and paving on, not only milling and paving on the Main Street. So our time should look really good. After the paving is completed.
So can we put that anywhere so people know about it, or how do you, are doing?
It was on the webpage. It was on the front.
Is it? Okay.
They're starting, they're starting this Wednesday. They're starting.
This Wednesday?
They're starting this Wednesday to start doing the top mix on the patches. They just called me this evening and told me that the plants are opening up on Wednesday. The vermic, so they can start working on, they're gonna start working on the vitals on the road first. You know, getting them patched, and then, you know, so it'll start helping out a little bit.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. That was the main thing, was waiting for the weather to get warm enough for the vermic plants.
I mean, it's, it's really tough when you're putting down, you know, it's not really a soft patch. It's a hard patch, and then you're running your, your snow plows over top of that salt, and, you know, and cars are hitting it. Plus, the way that that works, all those laterals were cut down and replaced, and then they settled. So you've got them settling, so now you've got a pothole, and so I know it's a mess.
Yeah, I'm assuming they're gonna be doing their cutbacks and doing the, they're gonna roll with and, you know, top mix it now. So as long as the weather stays really good, then they'll go get that, that part done. You know, with overlaying and stuff, it won't happen till later in the summer. You know, we get to that part.
Okay, cool. Anything else? So, accept the motion?
They go to the jury.
You got something else?
Just sidebar.
Oh, okay.
Free motion that we adjourned?
I have a motion to the adjourn, second by Bernal. All in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Yeah, there's two of this, I have three of these. These are.
Okay, you're done with me?
Yeah, I am. Yeah, you too. Yep, Friday tenth, I have it in my calendar. Yes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Today is whatever.